Hector. It's, uh, so how is the muting and unmuting working? I'm a little unfamiliar with this, what's happening?
This meeting as a Zoom meeting as opposed to a webinar. The reason being is that a Zoom meeting allows for privacy during executive session, whereas a webinar does not. And so I have disabled the unmuting for every individual, otherwise anyone attending could unmute themselves and interrupt the meeting. So if I ask you to unmute, please remain unmuted. Otherwise, you're going to have to contact me and then I'll have to unmute you manually. So uh, that's the reason for this, the setup today.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, uh, that explanation. I understand now. Um, so, uh, just, I'll just ask council, once you're unmuted, to stay unmuted and then just, uh, we'll all try to be, uh, careful about, uh, background noises. So maybe shutting off ringers and that kind of thing, uh, might be the advisable. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let me get over to my agenda. Uh, so we will call them, uh, County City Council Regular Meeting of February 5th, 2025 to order a roll call, please.
Councilor Colley.
Here.
Councilor Ponemirov.
Here.
Councilor Medina.
Here.
Councilor Pestizo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Par.
Here.
And Mayor Ayersflood.
Here.
Uh, Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is, uh, item two, which is additions and corrections to agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, Mayor, I do. Can you hear me okay?
I can, Gary.
Uh, can you see me?
No.
Okay. I'll need assistance from the recorder to get my video up.
But you sound great.
Okay. Okay. Uh, we're requesting some modifications to the agenda this evening under, first, under new business. We have a request from, uh, counselor. Getting some technical assistance. Okay. Uh, I'll be getting some technical assistance here so you can see me shortly. Uh, one is a request from Counselor, um, upon Amara to add a letter to a Vista concerning, uh, their rate increase proposal. Uh, and, uh, Counselor Ponemirov will be handling that item. Uh, and then also under new business to add an item, uh, consider appointment of city manager pro temp. Uh, and I'll be presenting that item. Then, uh, then towards the end of the agenda, we have item 11, which is an executive session, uh, and we will not need the executive session this evening. So it would just be adjournment.
Okay, uh, so, um, Gary, I have the old, uh, or actually Hector, I have the old agenda up and it sounds to me like we're gonna, um, put eight point three and eight point four. What, what is eight point two? Uh, I'm gonna look.
I, I only have eight point one on the agenda. I just conferred with the city recorder and he only has eight point one.
Okay.
Of application for Oregon Main Street.
Great. Then I did have the right agenda. Let me go back to that then. Um, okay, so that'll be.
Madam Mayor, can I point of information?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, on, on the, there's a, there's a different agenda in the agenda document that's on the website. So there's the packet that only has the eight point one, which is the grant. Um, but the agenda document on, on the calendar on the website has eight point one being the audit and eight point two being the grant. So I guess the question is whether Gary, if you want to do the audit tonight or not.
Uh, is Tessa on tonight?
Tessa is available.
Okay, so what did you?
I'm available. Um, we will be having the, uh, the audit at the next, um, city council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure I have it right. Eight point one is the grant.
Yes.
Eight point two is the Avista letter and eight point three is pro temp.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to make those changes. Uh, Council Ponemirov.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, uh, moved to add item eight point two, consideration of a letter to the Public Utility Commission regarding a proposed Avista rate increase. And item eight point three, uh, consider the appointment of a city manager pro temp.
Second.
And striking, uh, item number.
And striking the executive session, right. Thanks.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I have a motion and a second to add uh, eight point two, which is the Avista letter and eight point three, which is the pro temp item. And striking the executive session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, if you could raise electronic hand so that Hector can see. Does everybody know what that function is? Colette, do you have it?
I'm trying to have it.
Uh, for this one, we'll say that, okay. And then how, okay, it looks like everybody is, uh, voting in favor. Any opposed? Take your, take your hands down. It'll take us a minute to get back to into the groove of things. Uh, it looks like this passes unanimously. Uh, okay, I'm still trying to get back to my agenda. One second. The next item on the agenda is item number three. And that is community announcement. Staff.
Okay, uh, Mayor and Members of the Council have some community announcements and a couple of, uh, I guess city manager reports I'd like to loop in at the end. So, uh, announcing upcoming events on April 19th. The Bear Creek stewards cleanup at Lynn Newbury Park. Uh, more information to come. Check to the website uh, for that additional information. Uh, the city administration advises residents to monitor weather conditions by visiting weather.gov slash MFR. As of this date, the National Weather Service is predicting snowfall through this evening as well as low temperatures. I'll have a little more about the city's response to the storm in a moment. Vacancies on city committees and commissions. For a complete list, visit the city website at cityoftalent.org. Currently, we have, uh, the budget committee is looking for financially inclined residents. And the skate park advisory committee is looking for members. Uh, contact the city recorder for applications for all committee and commission vacancies. Uh, a fire mitigation grant is now available. A two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollar grant and a free, excuse me, dispensable space assessment. That's defensible space assessment, uh, done by Fire District Five, uh, is also available. If you visit Fire District Five's website for an application, uh, for the, uh, assessment and the two hundred and fifty dollar grant, uh, visit their website at JCFD5.com slash or backslash wildfire. Uh, Jackson County Community Long Term Recovery Group will be hosting an accessory dwelling unit workshop on March 15th at 11:00 AM in the Phoenix Civic Center. The workshop plans to bring together homeowners, contractors, builders, nonprofits, and local government officials. On February 19th, the, uh, Highway 99 Bear Creek Greenway Revisioning Committee, uh, will be hosting a information booth, uh, at the Phoenix Civic Center, uh, during an event that they're hosting that same day. Uh, that, uh, uh, information booth will be from six to eight PM. Uh, but earlier that day, uh, the, uh, uh, staff of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Highway 99 Bear Creek Greenway Revisioning Project will be hosting a table at the Talent Community Center uh, from 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM. Uh, so they'll have information about what the, uh, final recommendations are going to be coming from that group with respect to the Bear Creek Greenway, um, potential improvements, land use regulations along Highway 99. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, long-term management of the Greenway. Then just wanted to report, uh, that the public works staff has been busy the last few days as well as police. Uh, while City Hall has been closed due to the inclement weather. Uh, the public work staff has been out working, clearing roads, uh, dealing with, uh, hazardous trees, uh, and other issues created by the unusual storm event. Uh, we were able to do what we can, not owning any snow removal equipment, uh, which is not unusual for cities in the valley. Uh, but we were able to use, uh, backhoes, loaders, other equipment, some equipment that we rented. Uh, and we also retained a contractor to help on one day, uh, to clear roads. Um, the, uh, Public Works Crew did a great job. Uh, continues to work to do the cleanup. They've got uh, some work ahead. There's still some equipment here at City Hall that they'll be using tomorrow uh, to do cleanup work. Uh, and the police department reports that they only had one reported traffic accident that was snow related, uh, which was really good news. So, uh, the police are on duty. Uh, they're helping out where they can and Public Works is on duty, uh, every day. Now, one final announcement I wanted to make, uh, the council's aware of this is that I have announced my retirement uh, effective March 3rd. Uh, and, uh, I've, uh, presented that letter to, uh, the city council a week or so ago. Uh, and, uh, regret having to, uh, depart from the city. I know it was not part of the original plan. Uh, but, uh, due to some health re, health issues that have emerged, uh, I need to take uh, this action to change some lifestyle issues, one of which is to reduce the level of stress in my life. Uh, and there are times when being a city manager can be stressful. So, uh, I'll be, uh, leaving the city, uh, March uh, 3rd, uh, during this coming month of February, uh, I'll be working a more limited schedule. Uh, uh, so we'll likely not be in the office every day or full days. But wanted the public to know that, uh, uh, that change is taking place. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. And, um, that, uh, that, that last bit is, is, uh, important news. Uh, this is not your last meeting, so we'll save our, uh, we'll save our best wishes for, uh, sometime in March. Um, the next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda item. Uh, Hector, I thought I saw one from Jason Clark. Are there any others?
I've only received one, um, request, uh, since, uh, this afternoon. I can see my email right now. Uh, we'll start with Jason Clark and I'll unmute him.
Thank you.
Uh, can y'all hear me all right? Yeah, thank you for, uh, the opportunity, uh, to address you all this evening and, um, in light of the, uh, recent announcement, I will take the opportunity to say, uh, thank you, Gary, for your service to the city. Uh, it has been much appreciated.
Thank you.
Um, uh, given the, uh, recent weather, um, I have, uh, observed some damage to some of our public trees and just wanted to, um, encourage the, uh, city to, uh, um, contract with a licensed arborist to, um, assess that, that damage, um, and to, um, you know, do, make some of the necessary pruning, um, so that our, uh, public trees, um, have the, uh, best, best, uh, health going forward and, um, don't, um, unnecessarily, uh, present a future hazard. Um, I also just wanted to, uh, say in light of the, um, planned activities, uh, at the skate park, at, uh, Town Hall, at the, um, new property on New Street, um, that I just wanted to encourage the city to, um, to develop and implement a tree protection plan uh, for those sites. Um, it's, it's understood that sometimes trees have to be removed for projects, but, uh, we love to see, uh, any trees that can be preserved, uh, preserved on the sites and, uh, a plan, uh, to protect those sites and hope to, um, before work gets started there to see, uh, protective fencing um, within the appropriate perimeter around, around, uh, trees that we want to protect, um, so that, uh, we have those, uh, community assets, uh, healthy and, uh, vibrant, uh, as we go forward. And I'm looking forward to seeing those projects implemented. And that's all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, Hector, did you find any other?
Uh, Mayor, there are no additional speaker requests.
Thank you, Hector. So at this time, we are closing speaker request forms and moving on to item number five, which is department reports. Are you, did you conclude your department reports? Uh, Gary?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number six. Uh, it is the consent calendar. Um, I will, uh, does anybody have any questions or comments about the consent calendar? Seeing none, uh, I will entertain a motion. Council Byers.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please raise your electronic hand. And Hector, I just want to make sure I'm giving you enough time to, to see all of this. Is, is, uh, a couple of seconds adequate for you?
Yes, Mayor, I'm feverishly taking notes.
Thank you, Hector. All right. And, uh, anybody opposed? Uh, Hector, I see that, uh, the motion carries unanimously.
That's great, Mayor. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item number seven, uh, which is unfinished business. There is none. Uh, item eight point one is the, um, approval of the application of the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant. Staff?
Mayor, I'd like to turn this, uh, item over to our Finance Director, uh, Tessa Delain, who's been working diligently on this project.
Good evening. Um, in your agenda packet is resolution 2025 one eleven dash R, a resolution for applying for the 2025 Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant from the State Historic Preservation Offices, Oregon Heritage Program. Grant guidelines have also been included in your packet. As you all may know, the City of Talent's historic town hall urgently needs funding for restoration and repairs of the building. Finance Department staff is currently preparing for the application, which requires authorization from the city council. Resolution 2025 one eleven dash R provides this authorization. The grant is highly competitive and may be awarded for amounts up to $400,000. Matching funds of at least 30% of the award are required. The items to be included in the grant application are exterior paint, skirting, stair repairs and/or replacement, a new roof, new gutters, new fountain spouts, and an alarm system. It's very possible we might be looking at giving a ADA lift as well. The City of Talent is requesting an amount of up to 250,000 with a, with final cost to be determined once staff has gathered all of the quotes. Please note that more, more grant sources will be sought after the restoration of, of the exterior of the building and grounds once the city council has determined the future use of the building. The application deadline is March 13th. Notification occurs sometime in May. The project starts once the grant is executed and the funds are available. No work is to be started until July 1st of 2025. Staff recommends a motion to adopt resolution 2025 dash 11 dash R, authorizing finance staff to prepare and apply for the 2025 Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant for the restoration and repair of Talent's historic town hall. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Tessa. Does anybody have any questions of Tessa? Always a sign of a good staff report. Um, so, uh, in the absence of questions, I'll entertain a motion. Please raise your hand if you want to make a motion. Council Perry Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I am navigating to the motion. Um, I move to adopt resolution 2025 dash one 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 dash R, authorizing finance staff to prepare and apply for the 2025 Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant for the restoration and repair of Talent's historical town hall.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025 dash one 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 dash R, authorizing finance staff to prepare and apply for the 2025 Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant for the restoration and repair of Talent's historic town hall. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Sorry, point of order, I think we need a roll call for this one.
It's a resolution. You're right about that. Uh, Hector, please.
Um, sorry, Mayor. I think also, didn't we have a kind of a rule to always do roll call on Zoom? I'm vaguely remembering that.
Yeah, I don't think it was adopted in the new rules, so we'll just go ahead and do a roll call on resolutions and ordinances and but thank you for that reminder. Um, and believe me, uh, everybody, I appreciate reminders. Sometimes it gets, uh, it gets hard to, uh, to remember everything while you're, while you're, uh, running a meeting. It, it can get pretty tough. Um, Hector, roll call, please.
Councilor Colley.
Yes.
Councilor Ponemirov.
Yes.
Councilor Medina.
Yes.
Councilor Pestizo.
Yes.
Councilor Byers.
Yes.
And Councilor Par Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. And you guys can take your hands down. I really appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is eight point two. It's the Avista letter. Staff report?
Mayor, I'll defer to Counselor, uh, Ponemirov, uh, as she originated the site.
Thanks, Gary, and sorry for getting it too late. Um, yeah, so, uh, the Public Utilities Commission is going to be considering, uh, a rate increase, uh, from Avista. Uh, this is a good opportunity for the city to weigh in, talk about concerns, um, that a 7% increase in rates would have on our residents. And also, um, to, to kind of nudge, uh, at this inflection point that, uh, the, the state, uh, moved more towards, um, away from fossil fuels and to renewable energy. Um, the letter, uh, is basically in line with, um, our comprehensive plan, clean energy element, as well as, uh, recent resolution we passed um, regarding clean energy. Uh, and it also calls for us to advocate, uh, just like this. Um, so I'll just, I'll just add, as a matter of interest, uh, the Citizens Utility Board, um, which, uh, is, um, advocates on behalf of rate pairs is also making a suggestion that, well, the, the, the 7% increase has to do with, you know, paying shareholders more, um, expanding the system, but also, um, replacing pipes, uh, over time, which, um, which is, is the right thing to do because it's a safety hazard. But, uh, the, the Cub, the Citizens Utility Board, has a, a, a concept, uh, proposal that rather than, uh, replace the pipes which run to individual homes to offer those homes, um, some incentives to go all electric. So, uh, this seems like a, a move in the right direction. Um, it's one of the, uh, I think smarter and more efficient ways, um, to, to make this happen. But anyway, uh, y'all have seen the letter. Um, the only change I wanted to make to it, which I intended to do before I sent it out, was just to make it uh, coming from the mayor, uh, on behalf of the governing body of the city, um, which is how we usually do things. So with that small, um, adjustment, um, I, uh, I would, I would hope that the council would approve this letter. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Uh, Council Ponemirov, I'm going to ask you to read the letter into the record, um, just.
Sure.
It's being recorded and, and that way, uh, if residents are interested, they can, they can, it should be easy for them to just go to the recording and listen to it.
Absolutely. And, um, shall I do it with the, the modification right at the beginning? Uh, that I'm suggesting, okay.
Yeah, you'll read it as, uh.
As amended.
As the council will be considering it, so.
Okay, great. So, um, this is in Ray of, uh, UG 519, Avista Natural Gas Rate Revision. Uh, Dear Chair Decker and Commissioners Tony and Perkins, on behalf of the Sid, of the Talent City Council, the governing body of the City of Talent, I am writing to express concerns regarding the proposed utility rate increase submitted by Avista Natural Gas. Avista's proposal places an undue burden on Talent's residents, particularly our most vulnerable populations. Residential ratepayers already facing difficult financial conditions will experience disproportionate price increases that impact low-income residential ratepayers the most, particularly in the winter months. Investments in new pipes and prioritizing shareholder profits will hurt our city's residents. If Avista's 7% increase is permitted, residential customers could pay bills that are, on average, $4.27 higher per month. Single-family homes may see an average of a monthly bill of $69 and maybe as high as $130 in December. And multifamily homes will see an increase of $3.16 or $66 average per month. Um, per ends, $126 in December. We recognize the necessity of some infrastructure investments to keep pipes safe. However, the largest investment Avista plants is to make in its pipeline, adding millions of dollars to our residents' bills for decades. As the state continues to work diligently to address the housing crisis and build affordable housing while meeting its climate goals, it is critical that we are building with sustainability in mind. Specifically, we must ensure that we are not further driving the climate crisis by increasing the use of fossil fuels and investing in gas infrastructure. We urge the Commission to consider these points carefully and to work to find a balanced approach that supports only the necessary infra, infrastructure improvements for public safety without placing an undue burden on ratepayers and the climate. We value increased engagement to understand the pressures facing Avista and collaborative work to address issues that impact our community. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Signed, Mayor Darby Ayers Flood, City of Talent.
Thank you, Counselor Ponemaroff. And just for the record, I, uh, reviewed this, uh, letter prior to it, uh, being distributed to the to the council. Um, so, uh, I, and I'd also want to express my appreciation of Counselor Ponemaroff for, uh, for monitoring these issues, uh, as part of your liaison position, you're doing an outstanding job. Uh, and, oh, Counselor President Ponemaroff, yes. Um, okay, so with that, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve this as the mayor signing this letter on behalf of the council, the city. Behave, on behalf of the council, is that how you have it, uh, Counselor?
Uh, yeah, the the letter, I just said letter from the city.
Okay, very good. Just want to make sure I state it right. Uh, any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Ponemaroff?
Uh, I move to approve the letter from the mayor, uh, or from the city to the Public Utility Commission regarding the proposed Avista rate increase.
Second.
I was gonna say as read into the record, but I guess I don't need to.
Um, I'm gonna say that.
Okay.
Because I don't have it written down. Um, we have a motion and a second to approve the letter to Avista Utilities as, no, to the, uh, sorry, it's about Avista Utilities to the, uh, Utility Board. Um, as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, okay, and, um, any opposed? Okay, uh, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Ponemaroff, again, for your outstanding work as liaison uh, to these issues. Item number 8.3 is, uh, the Pro Tem Staff Report.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, following up on my earlier announcement, uh, I, uh, am, uh, scheduled to retire with my last working day being March 3rd. Uh, with respect to that, uh, I I am also planning to work limited days or limited hours, uh, during the remainder of February. Uh, so, uh, I've discussed this with the mayor and the council leadership team uh, and feel that it's appropriate to, uh, have a, uh, city manager pro tem uh, come on board as soon as possible so we can ensure a, uh, good transition of management over the next three weeks, um, three to four weeks. So, uh, in that regard, uh, you know, it's not uncommon, uh, for cities to uh, look to the League of Oregon Cities, uh, interim city manager list uh, and invite candidates, uh, or consider candidates or appoint someone off that list to serve as a city manager pro tem. Uh, however, in this case, uh, uh, working with the council leadership team, I've identified a local candidate who is available immediately, starting February 10th, to, uh, move into that position. Uh, I think it's an excellent candidate. His name is Alex Campbell. Uh, his, uh, he's with us tonight, uh, and, uh, is available to discuss this matter with you. Uh, it's my recommendation that you take action tonight to appoint Alex as the city manager pro tem, uh, effective February 10th. Uh, and then we would work together, uh, through the month of February, uh, to transition the management uh, in a, uh, positive way, uh, and make sure that we have a good, a good, uh, handoff. Uh, and and, uh, consistent management throughout and continuing into, uh, the new administration. So I'm, uh, I'm acquaint, I'm acquainted with Alex. Uh, I worked with him while I was the city manager in Brookings uh, on a number of projects, uh, through his role with the Regional Solutions Program of the Governor's Office. Uh, he has always been very supportive of the local government, uh, and good to work with. He's knowledgeable of local government. Um, has, uh, worked as an economic development specialist in the past with the City of Milwaukee, uh, as an executive director for a economic development, uh, organization. Uh, worked, as I mentioned, with the Governor's Office, uh, more recently. He's worked on the staff of the, uh, of Oregon Housing and Community Services, uh, putting together the, uh, delivery, uh, of the, uh, $400 million re-Oregon, uh, program, which includes the peer program. Uh, so I, I interacted with him, uh, several times during the process of securing our, our peer funding. So he's knowledgeable of city government, uh, uh, knows the, uh, intricacies of state government and funding, uh, both, uh, in the private, both in the nonprofit sector and the government sector. I've interviewed him a couple of times, uh, I've known him before. I think he will do a great job. Uh, so, uh, my recommendation to you, uh, this evening is that after you talk with him a little bit, if you choose to, uh, is to, um, uh, direct the city attorney and the city manager to work with Alex, uh, Campbell in the development of an employment agreement for council approval with base compensation to be as provided to the city manager and to and to appoint Alex Campbell as city manager pro tem effective February 10th, 2025. So I present to you for your consideration, uh, Mr. Alex Campbell.
Gary, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions of you first and and perhaps Dave, and then, uh, for the interview questions, I'm gonna ask Council President to go ahead and pull up her copy of it, and I'll have her, uh, handle the questions tonight, uh, if you don't mind, Counselor Ponemaroff. Um, uh, Dave or Gary, either one, um, I, there's some new members on our team, and I just thought it might be a good idea to to get a, uh, a description of definition of the city manager's role, the city manager pro tem's role, and the temporary, you know, sort of the temporary nature of that.
Mayor, in my experience, a pro tem is, uh, uh, someone who, uh, um, replaces an existing city manager on short notice. Uh, and, uh, that person can either, uh, perform in that role on a short-term basis or longer term, uh, and the city council at some point can decide whether to, uh, make the appointment permanent, uh, or undertake a recruitment, uh, in in which if the city manager pro tem chooses, he can participate in in that. Uh, I've seen it handled both ways, uh, over the years, and, uh, his role would be to uh, fill the shoes of the city manager and work closely with the council leadership team uh, in making any major, uh, management decisions, I would suspect, such as appointing department managers.
Great, thank you. And, you know, we've, we've appointed an interim city manager in the past while we uh, conducted a a city manager search. We've done that, we've, we've used that process in the past. Essentially, the interim city manager and the pro tem manager is the same thing, right? We just used different language. Yeah. Um, okay, um, anybody else have any questions before Counselor Ponemaroff, uh, asks, uh, the prepared questions? All right, thank you, Dave, uh, and thank you, Gary. Um, Counselor Ponemaroff?
Sure.
Let me welcome you, Alex. Uh, you know, I'm, uh, like Gary, very familiar, uh, with your work in our region, uh, and your phenomenal work with the state and in the Governor's Office for for many, many years. Uh, and we really appreciate you, uh, joining us tonight. Counselor Ponemaroff?
Yeah, I echo that. Thanks for being here, Alex. I have six questions, uh, that Gary prepared. I'll just, I'll read them one by one, but I I want counsel to feel, uh, just raise your hand if you want to follow up. Uh, question one, describe the methods you would use to keep the mayor and the city council informed on city business and emerging issues that may need their policy direction.
Great, thank you. Well, first of all, just want to say, appreciate being here, Mayor Ayers Flood, members of the council. It's a uh, it's an honor to be considered for for this role. And, um, yeah, thanks for the question. So, um, Gary's practice of of giving a weekly, a weekly, uh, report, I think, is is one that I'd be very interested in continuing. I think that's a, that's a great, um, structure. Similarly, the the regular meeting with the, uh, council leadership group seems like an excellent, uh, way to, for the city manager and the and the council to stay aligned and in regular communication. Um, in terms of the bigger picture, sort of policy questions that you raised, you know, how how do we, how does the city manager best keep you all informed and engaged in in that development? Um, I think to some extent it varies by topic, right? But, um, I I think generally, uh, part of, part of good project planning is identifying stakeholders very early. And, uh, obviously, in, uh, in any process that ultimately is moving towards city council consideration, keeping you all in the loop as a body at key points, uh, in the in the development of that sort of either limit or expand the scope of options that are available to you, um, is the most important way to do that. And I I think, I think formal presentations and and giving the council the ability to, uh, gradually, right, incrementally shift and narrow or widen the range of options gives you also an opportunity to make sure that the final options that you want to see are there, and also allows the the council familiarity with the topic and and the and the thinking that went into developing those options.
Thank you, Alex. Um, counsel, any follow-up? So I'll move on to the second question then, which is briefly describe the role of the city manager vis a vis the role of the city council.
Hmm, um, so the, I I view the city manager as, um, the lead, the lead staff person, right, who is, of course, directly, um, reporting to the city council. Um, in terms of division of responsibility, of course, uh, it's the council's job to set, uh, large, big-picture strategy uh, in the level of policy, of course, that, uh, that needs, uh, city approval, whether that's an ordinance or or a resolution. Um, and it's really the city manager's job to execute those those decisions, those those policy directives of the council, but also to support the council as you deliberate on, uh, on the matters that, uh, you know, affect the city, um, that you all bring with the, uh, to to discussion and also to suggest topics to you all to, uh, to consider. So, um, in summary, right, I, my, my career has very much been, uh, as a public servant. And, uh, I see, I see being city manager, an extension of that, uh, and reporting directly to to the council, and and, uh, I'd be excited to do that.
Thank you. Any follow-up? Okay, third question is, the city is at an important point in its economic and community development history. How can you contribute to the success of building a strong community and strong economy and a strong city revenue base?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I I, uh, I will confess, I I find, I find the area of economic development super interesting. Um, I think it's a really interesting challenge to, the sort of interaction of economics and geography. Um, would pose a lot of questions that, um, you know, aren't necessarily easily answerable by conventional um, economic theory or political science theory, right? It's, it's a, it's a really interesting space where, um, and in part because, just because a particular strategy works in one community, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna work in the next one. And, um, I think it's one of those, uh, policy areas where it's the implementation that's at least, if not more important than what you choose to do, right? It's important to have a vision, to have a direction, which of course, you know, is really the the council's job. But, um, with the support of the man, city manager, of course. But the, um, the implementation and the tactics and the the finer details of what you do and how how you do it, to me, are are where, are the 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 piece that I'm best at and also, I think, a really critical piece of the puzzle. And so, um, my practice when I was working in full-time economic development jobs, um, I'll say frankly, there there are, uh, it's kind of like being a traffic engineer, right? Everybody drives, so they think they know where the stop signs should go. Everybody has a, you know, has income, spends money, and, you know, rightly have opinions and ideas about about economics and and, um, how they should function. Um, and a lot of them are really interesting. The real question I always ask is, are you interested in helping do this, right? And the 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 fundamentally, you know, the pub, the public sector, um, needs to collaborate with the private sector. And you need to do that in the places that the private sector is excited and has energy to do that. So my experience has largely been you're, you're working and you're looking for those those areas of energy where you can, where you can collaborate. And and ideally, right, making connections across those different areas of energy. So you can, you can find, you know, build, build momentum and support and support. I fundamentally, local government, I I think, is is, uh, an enabler, right? We're very infrequently going to be the, um, the driver in terms of making the the, uh, capital investment, making the final decisions about those investments. So we, the, I I think the critical, the critical role is establishing a a a playing, not a playing field, I guess a playing field is a fair, fair analogy, um, an attractive place to do business. And I mean, I I say that with all the caution in the world, attractive place to do the kinds of business that you want to have done in your community. And, um, more and more, I think, um, especially when we think about regional economic development and sort of the 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 core industries, the kind of industries that we that we want to help grow here, you know, that whether they're forming here or they're considering coming here, uh, are are our knowledge economy. And, um, the the good-paying jobs rely on intelligent folks who are who are educated. Doesn't have to be college education. I I certainly don't don't mean to imply that. But, um, the kinds of jobs that we want to see in this community are gonna care tremendously about their workforce. And they're gonna, and that workforce is gonna care tremendously about where they live. So I I I think when you think about community development or economic development, you can, you can, it's sort of like one of those, uh, those picture books, the the 3D books, you can see it one way or you can see it the other, right? Is community development driving, you know, uh, setting the stage for economic development? Or is economic development setting the stage for community development? From a financial standpoint, right? You have to have the economic development to create the tax base, to do the 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 nice things that you want to do that to ensure that you have a beautiful and and pleasant place to live. Similarly, if you don't have, if you're not working on making sure that it's a place that's attractive, uh, for for your existing residents, um, if your future residents, I think you're you're swimming against the tide in terms of the the economic development. So that's, that's a little bit about what the way I look at it.
Okay, uh, any follow-up questions from council? Okay, not seeing any. Uh, just describe your experience in working with elected officials. Okay, not seeing any. Just describe your experience in working with elected officials.
Yeah, thanks. So my first experience was at City of Milwaukee. It was, it was challenging. We were, I was there when we were, the city was making the final decisions about the extension of light rail to Milwaukee, which was a very controversial issue. And so that's, that's one of the places where it became very real to me and I, and I, and I really developed my own sort of personal philosophy about public service. And I believe very strongly in democracy. And the way representative democracy in our country works, right, is through elected officials. And those elected officials need staff who are willing and interested to carry out their roles or their, their direction. And if you're not comfortable with that, then it's probably not the right place to work. But as long as you are working there, that, that's, that's the, that's the mentality that you should really bring. You should bring your knowledge, bring your, bring, bring your values certainly in the way that you do the work. But that ultimately you're, you're there to answer the questions and to carry out what, what, what the council wants to see done. So, anyway, I worked a lot directly with the mayor. Jim Bernard was there when I was there. He was running the farmer's market and we helped get a, get a main street program going there in, in City of Milwaukee. So had, had the joy of both working in formal, formal settings, but also in sort of the community development side. In Douglas County, it was a nonprofit, but it was a public-private partnership. So we had representatives of the county and of City of Roseburg and other municipal governments regularly worked with both my nonprofit board and those local government boards and reported and testified regularly before both the, the county, the county commissioners and, and, and city, city councils there. Working for Governor Brown, I, I got to spend time with her. I got to, the opportunity to spend a lot of time getting to know state elected officials. A lot, a big part of my job was being, connecting with the state representatives and state senators on the policy, on the projects and priorities that they had in their region. And had the opportunity to testify before the legislature a couple of times. And then in my job at Oregon Housing and Community Services, I was in char, in charge over accountable for public communication on the, on the disaster recovery effort. So again, in that role, worked a lot with local governments. I think I, I came, last time I talked to City of Talent was about the, the regional recovery plan that the LTRG was developing. So did a lot, lot of, lot of work liaison to, to state, local and federal officials in that role too. So I have a lot, a lot of experience working with elected officials.
Thank you. Council mayor, any follow up? So the next question is, what is the greatest strength or asset, asset you can bring to the city of talent?
Thanks, thanks. Um, I, I believe and I, everybody loves to examine themselves, right? I recently had the opportunity to do a, a strengths SDI analysis and my, my score was, was very much in the center of their sort of diagram, which was, is a blend of values of process results and focus on people. And, and what it said about myself very much resonated with me. A very collaborative leadership style. I'm very interested in bringing folks together, exploring, exploring alternatives. I am often not the first one to speak in a, in a discussion unless it's to ask questions and to, to, you know, elucidate, bring people into a conversation who, who may not be participating initially. So I think it's that, that kind of leadership style that would enable me to really help bridge, right? I think that's the, the, the key, the key role of the city managers is bridging both between the council and the rest of the city staff, but also one of the key, key conduits for information from, from the, the private sector and from your, your residents to the, to the council.
Great. And the last question is, discuss your experience in making the workplace services provided to residents and access to the policymaking process inclusive.
So I, I'm not going to necessarily touch on every aspect of, of that question because there's obviously a lot there. I will say that I, I, one of the very useful experiences for myself of working on fire recovery is I had, I had the experience of facilitating a number of, a number of different community discussions. And there are some local leaders here who really were so helpful in, I think that I like, I love the phrase being called in rather than being called out. That really helped me understand the importance of setting the stage and not leaving things unsaid. I very much had sort of the mentality at that time, hey, I'm working for the governor's office. I'm a, you know, I'm, I'm a right-thinking person. Why, why do we have to say these, say these things? I had, to be frank, a little bit of pessimistic attitude about that, that the, the importance of how you are explicit about the, the need to create a, a welcoming space. And so I'm very thankful to, to those, to those folks who, who helped me see the light there. And, and I think that, that set the stage for, you know, that, that specific work was the pre-work that ultimately turned into the LTRG. And I, I think, I think the sort of inclusiveness that really got built into the DNA of that approach started really early. You know, happy to say, I think I played a small part in that. In terms of more in the workplace itself, one of the things that I had the pleasure of doing at OHCS was, was building a, a team for the first time is the first time that, well, first time in my career, I'd started from scratch, right? And built a team, but the, the largest team that I'd ever built and, and we were working, we were working mostly virtually, which posed some additional challenges for sure. But I, I, what I found that I needed to do was both, both one-on-one time and group time. And then also group time where I wasn't present. Right? So all, all three of those things I think are, are really important to, to building a culture where you are, you know, you're adapting that to the needs and the interests of those individuals who need to be served by that culture. So that, that's, I think, the, the approach that, that I would want to take, you know, not, not to be, to be explicit, to be careful and setting up expectations to start with, but then also to be responsive to the, to the needs of the individuals, right? Because that, though, that are, are, we, we are ultimately all individuals. We have backgrounds and perspectives that, that inform that and provide commonalities to, to other people at times. But, but really for, to have an inclusive workplace, I think you, you really have to, I heard the, the term people, people-centric services at the, at the continuum of care today. And I think, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. And those were the six prepared questions we had. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for additional questions.
Thank you. I, I don't have any additional questions. And that I just want to, I do want to say how much I appreciate Alex, your willingness to go on the, the public record for this interview. Often most, you know, our, our history is that we do the interviews in executive session for the, really the sole purpose of being discretion, having discretion for, having it be discreet for the, for the applicants as a personnel matter. And it's kind of a rare thing that we've been able to do this on the open record and it, it's refreshing. And, and I'm sure as we appoint to this interim position, it's also refreshing for the community to get to know you a little bit better in this way. And we, you know, we're happy to do executive sessions because we know people have reasons that they don't, sometimes don't want to be job searching openly. But in, in this case, it's really great to have you interview and, and, and let everybody sit in and, and listen in to your answers. It's been great. So without any further questions, I, I, I would just, if there's, are there any follow-up questions from any of the council?
Mayor, if I could take the moment just to say, but my current employer, Jackson Care Connect has been so supportive and, you know, interested in supporting me and also in the belief that, you know, that I could be the right fit for this, for the, for the community, that they've, they've really provided me the flexibility to do that. And I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to them.
Yeah. Very nice. And, and thank you, Gary and Alex for doing the groundwork. Okay, so if there's no further questions, we do have the opportunity to make the appointment to, to facilitate that warm handoff that we very rarely get an opportunity to do. I think most cities don't very often get an opportunity to do. And given, yeah, given Gary's time here, this, this could really facilitate an easier transition. So if there's no further questions, I would entertain entertain a motion on Gary's recommendation. Counselor Perry Miller? I, Hector, can you unmute Counselor Perry Miller? Hector, are you able to unmute Counselor Parry Miller?
Oh, apologies, mayor.
Yes, thank you, Hector. Sorry, that was suspenseful. Thank you so much, Alex, for those great answers. And I am ready with a motion. So I move to direct the city attorney and city manager to work with Alex Campbell in the development of an employment agreement for council approval with base compensation to be as provided to the city manager and to appoint Alex Campbell as city manager pro tem effective February 10th, 2025. And I think that is accurate. And if I need to change it, let me know.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I working off of one screen, trying to read the agenda. I'm just going to say, we have a motion and a second as stated into the record by Counselor Parry Miller. Rather than try to re, re, restate that. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Byers?
Yeah, thank you, Alex, for some really great answers today and also for some really great answers in the earlier vetting process with the leadership team, which I got to be a part of. And I, I just, overall, I want to comment on how grateful I am that we are getting such a warm handoff from Gary, who I know every council member on here has really appreciated for so many reasons. We have some massive projects coming up for town and I'm really grateful that this is going to be an opportunity to make sure that the person leading city staff with, will be able to fully, you know, pick up all the pieces and move it forward for us because of this. I'm really grateful to both of you for this. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just have a, a little deliberation too. I, I would echo what Counselor Byers just said, but also I want to add that you know, we have so many balls in the air right now with some of the, you know, some of the tremendous progress that, that Gary has made for our community and grant writing, literally millions of dollars incoming to our community and grant funding. And I, and I think about it in terms of balls in the air, but not just the balls in the air and how many there are in the air, but where they are in the air and how critical things are right now for us to be able to transition that work without losing any momentum. And the idea of being able to transition that work with a local professional that was instrumental in bringing some of those funds into our area and literally wrote some of the criteria for for a lot of those, those funds or participate in writing the criteria is an extraordinary opportunity. And my experience with Alex has been, I'm sure that he always has this interest in all of the cities that he works with, but he's always made me feel like he had a special interest in talent. And I just think that is the hallmark of a good leader to be able to give that kind of singular attention when you know that their, their responsibilities are so much broader than your own community. Anyway, it was certainly the case in all of the work, especially during the fire recovery around housing and some of the other responsibilities that, that Alex was, was carrying into our community from the state. So I, I can't express how fortunate this mayor feels to have a candidate of this caliber at this particular time with the level of work and responsibilities that we have because of the incredible leadership of, of Gary. It just seems like a really particularly special moment for our community and how we handle it moving forward for this interim period is, it will make the difference between whether we see those grants successfully implemented or not. And my experience with Alex is that, that's exactly what we'll get. So that's, those are my, my deliberations. Anybody else? All right. Hector, roll call please.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Panamrath?
Yes.
Counselor Medina? Oh, apologies.
Yes.
Counselor Pestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Gary, I just have one more request. Nobody knows where we're at with each and every grant, quite like you do. And, and I, I think it's going to be really important as we move towards planning for whatever the next process is, the team, the designated team will, will reach out to RV Cog and, and begin those discussions at some point in time. But I think what would be really helpful is for us to have a schedule of the workload and really the timeline for this interim position. And I think that will help in our discussions with RV Cog. You know, our past experiences that we've had, six to eight months, nine months with, with interims, I feel like we need to make sure that we time this right in terms of length of time, given the, the, just the fact that, that we have all that grant funding approved, but not, not in our city yet. And I, I, I feel like transitioning in the middle of all of that could be problematic. So what I'm hoping to get from your office in, in working with Alex and, and even Dave to some degree where necessary, would be to make sure that we secure the right timeline during this process is before we go to RV Cog and talk about what the next steps would be and what kind of timeline we want to look at for this interim. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. So we'll be looking for your recommendations. All right. So we'll be looking for your recommendation at some point in time on that.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, well, thank you, Alex, again. I I just, again, I just want to say how lucky I feel. To have to have you join. At this time for this warm handoff and and how much we appreciate everything you've done up to this point and we look forward to seeing what happens next.
Thank you. I'm I'm thrilled. I've ever since I left City of Milwaukee, I think I've been trying to get back to. Working for City. I think I think it's it's where it's where the stuff actually happens and I I missed a lot, so I'm excited to to jump in both.
Great. And thank you, Gary, for setting us up for for success. We really appreciate it. We just can't afford any downtime right now and we really appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
I'm all right. So the next item on the agenda is. Item nine point one, the review of the look ahead.
So I don't have a packet in front of me. I'm not sure if you'll have look ahead.
Does anybody have any questions about the look ahead and what just?
I don't think I. That sorry, this is. I didn't see it in the packet.
There it is. Someone, I assume Hector put it up on the screen.
Yeah, it's up.
Oh, yes. So we'll start with the nineteenth.
Yeah, so let's look at a couple of months here going ahead and if there are issues that. Are on your mind, council members and mayor, that you don't see on this list. Please let us know so we can get it scheduled appropriately.
Well, I would ask for the recommendations that I just asked for to be on one of the one on. On an upcoming agenda. And then the other thing I would ask for is a grant update.
Okay. We'll do a table of grants. I'm just doing quick numbers here. It's about eight and a half million. That we're going to be dealing with.
A lot of money. All right. So you can just schedule that accordingly, Gary, on your timeline, whatever agenda you want to put that on.
Okay.
Anybody else? It's hard for me to see hands when I when we go to these split screens. Any, Counselor Panamov?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm wondering, we usually do goal setting in February and I wonder if that's happening. If we're setting aside a study session for goals.
Okay. We can get that scheduled. Hector, let's talk about doing, you want to do that at a. It's difficult to do that at a council meeting. Perhaps and since we've. Finalized the. Council rules, we have time to do a. Maybe a one hour study session ahead of a council meeting, or we could schedule it on a separate Wednesday or any other day. Any particular?
I think we've done, I think we have done like Saturdays and stuff before for for goal setting, but.
Okay.
I think it does need at least an hour.
Yeah, it's usually a couple hours long. I mean, you're probably gathering department recommendations. We'd probably want to look at what. What what goals we want to advance from from the previous year and then if there's any additional goals that want to be added on. I see Hector's hand up.
Mayor, if I may interject, last year we had a goal. A study session focused on goals in the last week of February and in other years, the first weekend, the first weeks in March. Have been set aside for a goal setting.
Yeah, I'm fairly used to having them in March, but you know. Between Alex and Gary, whatever timeline you guys want to come up with, we'll make ourselves available.
First week in March sounds good. No.
Somewhere around the sixth, for example.
We'll try to get something last week of February.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Anything else for the look ahead?
All right. I, sorry, I'm.
Go ahead, Counselor Panamov.
This may not be the look ahead, but I'm wondering, maybe we could even do it tonight, talk through liaison assignments. With council.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to do that at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, that way it gives me an opportunity to. To make sure I've I've talked to all of the the counselors about. About liaison positions. And I haven't gotten to everybody yet, so.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say Together for Talent is a really great committee and I've got like four.
See if you can't break that up a little bit for you. All right, anything else for the look ahead? Okay. The next item on the agenda is. Item number ten, written communications, there are none. Item number eleven was the. Executive sessions, which has been stricken. So if there's nothing else. We'll adjourn this meeting at eight oh six. Thank you.